Good evening. I'd like to call the North Augusta City Council Study Session for Monday, March the 10th, 2025, to order. At this time, we're going to turn over to our City Administrator, Mr. Jim Clipper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as is our practice, we'll go through the agenda review for next week, followed by department details, and lastly, we'll have, under Mayor's Matters, several focus items. One is an update on the North Augusta Foundations. Other will be the Public Safety Headquarters update from Chief Johnson, and lastly, yours, and my favorite, the Hurricane Helene update. So, let's move into the agenda. You have a number of proclamations. You actually have three for next week that the mayor will be reading: Child Abuse Prevention Month, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and also Month of the Military Child. In addition to that, next Monday is our visit from the Optimist Club for Youth Appreciation. So, they'll be spending a chunk of the day with us on Monday, and we'll have a number of students here in the council chambers at the council meeting on Monday evening. So, they'll be recognized there. Moving into old business, we have item number seven under Engineering, Ordinance Number 2025-06, amending Chapter Six, Title Three, out of Construction Permit Schedules of the City Code of the City of North Augusta, South Carolina, Second Reading. This is one that Tom's talked about in depth at a previous study session, where just aligning the code and the budget actions. You all had passed a budget that had updated the fee structure, but was not updated in ordinance, and so this will allow us to marry up those two going forward. The next items I have, I'll link together, Items Eight and Nine, both under Planning and Development. Tommy Paradise was not able to be here this evening, so I'll take my best shot at it. So, you have Ordinance Number 2025-07, to amend the zoning map of the City of North Augusta, South Carolina, by rezoning plus Romanus 25.59 acres of land owned by Hull Martin County LLC, listing the tax parcel numbers from general commercial to planned development. And this is the second reading, which is immediately followed by Ordinance Number 2025-08, to approve the general development plan for the 201.8-plus acre hive planned development on the east side of West Martin Town Road between Nobcon Avenue and Interstate 20, also Second Reading. So, the first action, Ordinance Number 2025-07, is what changes the commercial aspect of the hive, which is a standalone general commercial zoned district, to be part of the larger PD planned development within the development itself. Again, that does not change the structure of the development, doesn't change the number of houses, doesn't change the density of anything. It's really administrative action that the council has to do in order to have these all wrapped together to be sort of part of the same PD. And then, because this is now absorbing the general commercial aspect of it, the second item, Ordinance Number 2025-08, is to approve the new updated general development plan, which includes the commercial aspects. So, it's really two for one. The end state is the same, but you need two separate actions via ordinance to make that a complete action going forward. So, I know there were a number of questions that have been asked online, and also for their council members who've been related to me, but I will take my best shot at answering any of your questions today on the hive and what that would look like going forward.
Jim, if you don't mind, I mean, I think most people are aware of when you come in off the interstate, the light there that will go into the hive. But I'm not sure, and we might have talked about the study session last time, but maybe just kind of talk about what's going to happen in the Nobcon area as far as the light and the acceleration, deceleration lines, lanes going into the hive from Nobcon, if they might be interesting.
Mr. Mayor, what I'll do is I'll start, is if you were transiting from Georgia across Interstate 20, crossing your bridge, obviously, there's still rain closures and things that are happening there. We're excited about having that end at some point in time. And so ultimately, when you cross over into South Carolina from Georgia, and you get off at Exit One, and you come up to the top of that ramp, right now, you're either going right or you have a stoplight that makes you go left or allows you to go left. And so ultimately, what we're going to see is that light is going to be changed to marry up with the development entrance, and so that when you come off the ramp, if you will, from I-20 on the Martin Town Road, there'll be an option to go directly into the development going forward. If you make a right-hand turn coming off that ramp, now heading southbound on Martin Town Road, you got wacky lanes, and you've got the Circle K on the right-hand side, and you're approaching Savannah Bay, and you're on your right, and you come to Nobcon, you'll see some activity on the corner of Nobcon and Martin Town of getting some preparatory work done for a traffic light. And that traffic light that will be at the intersection of Nobcon and Martin Town is actually being triggered by the Parker apartment complex, Flannanos River Falls. And so, that will allow for people traveling around that way to be able to even make a left-hand turn on a Nobcon or do U-turn. And you can see they're starting to bump out the roadway in a small way that'll allow for that U-turn lane to go forward. And so, it's a private enterprise right now to move forward on the light, but understand that the Parker's apartments is not allowed to get their certificate of occupancy for the second phase until that light is in. So, certainly, there's a powerful economic driver to make sure that's done. Obviously, we do this in partnership with, you know, the city, the SEDOT, and then these private enterprise folks that are putting in this light. But the mass arms have been ordered. I believe they're being fabricated right now. And so, we're not all that far out from having movement here on the mass arms. I wouldn't say that I would expect to see a light before masters, but certainly here in the spring, I think we're coming up on having a light being functional there at Nobcon and Martin Town. There's also going to be some additional work that'll be done on Martin Town, also Nobcon, for deceleration lanes to allow for entrance into the hive as that gets going. So, ultimately, you'll see a number of minor traffic pattern changes, with a major traffic pattern change being the traffic light itself at Nobcon and Martin Town.
So, that should help Savannah Bay people?
In a small way, councilman, I would say yes. I understand Mr. Stickler's concern is not going to be fully covered that way. What's going to happen is the safest way for you to get out of Savannah Bay is to make a left-hand turn after they do this work, is to actually make a right-hand turn and do the U-turn at Nobcon and Martin Town to come out, because that's the only signalized way for people to get out until a larger change is potentially enacted.
Okay.
All right. And then moving on to number, item number 10, under Administration, Ordinance Number 2025-09, amending Article Six, Division Two, Demonstrations and Parades of the Municipal Code of the City of North Augusta, Section 16-100 through 16-105, specifically, the amount transfers authority for the issuance of permits related to demonstrations and parades from the City Council to the City Administrator or Assistant City Administrator, Second Reading. And this is one we've talked about, and really, we're doing this really with an eye towards the Christmas parade, so the Lions Club doesn't have to formally petition the City Council every year as they do. That doesn't mean they can't come down during a power hour or a study session or another venue to talk about what they're doing, but then it takes the routine action of having to apply for a permit from having to come to council that we can handle administratively. Barring any questions on that, unless Kelly's got other thoughts, we'll move into new business, which is item number 11, under Engineering, Resolution Number 2025-08, authorizing the City of North Augusta to enter into a contract to bring obstruction removal for the needed repairs to public stormwater detention facilities. And so, as we've talked about during our Hurricane Helene updates, we've been very focused on the items that most directly affect our citizens on a daily basis, which is our roadways and our sidewalks, and we are continuing to work in there. But now that we've gotten a good handle on the parks and most of the roadways, we're allowed to now kind of focus on some of the other items, and one of those is the stormwater detention ponds, of which there are 11 that the city is responsible for maintaining. And we have a number of trees that have fallen into these stormwater detention ponds that can obstruct the water flow, and so those need to be addressed. So, we went out to bid. That closure period is over, and we received multiple bids. I want to say at least seven or eight. And so, what we'll be presenting to council at the council meeting is a warning of a contractor to the low bidder for us to be able to go do work in the stormwater detention ponds. I'll pause for any questions on that. Last but not least, under Boards and Commissions, listed as the Clubhouse Riverside Village Owners Association Incorporated, appointed by the mayor, and received information by council. So, one of the things that came to our attention fairly recently, and Kelly Zier and I were invited to a meeting with the new ownership group of the Clubhouse building that's there at the stadium, so that's the apartment portion of the stadium itself, and that building is co-owned. So, this ownership group has what the apartments are, and they also have the unfinished office space, the 14,000 square foot of office space. But the city is responsible and owns the stadium portion, the clubhouse portion where the locker rooms are, and the aspects of the green jackets used that are right there on the concourse. Those are city-owned aspects. So, it's an interesting building. It's bifurcated and subdivided in a way that it looks like one complete building, and it is, but the ownership is split amongst multiple owners. And so, when Greens don't have ownership of that building, we did not have any kind of dialogue at that point in time about requirements for homeowners associations or things along those lines. But now, we have a new ownership group for that building, and so they approached the city about participating in their homeowner association that's built into the source documents that we have for the establishment Riverside Village. This is not something we've ever done before, and so we wanted to do this in a formal way. And much like the State and Advisory Board, which is also set about in the requirements of the legal documents of Riverside Village, where the council got to receive information from the mayor about J.D. McCauley, now serving as one of our State and Advisory Board members. We have three city members on that board out of the five total. But on this particular board, the Homeowners Association Board, the city will have one member of that board, and the other two members will be the ownership group of the private office space and then the apartments themselves. So, this is really just part of a series of actions we have to make sure we're in the right membership groups within the village itself.
JD's going to represent us.
Of course, this will all be followed by another updated Hurricane Helene. But that's the agenda I have for this evening, so subject to any of your questions. But it concludes the agenda review for next week. All right. And Kayla was kind enough to stand in for us for Jamie this evening, and so Kayla is going to take it over for department details and get the board running on that.
First, we have Linda Williamson with Finance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's update is short. Cycle Two has a due date on March 21st, and Cycle One's due date is April 3rd. And that's all I have for you tonight.
And mine's next. If you look on the back of your department details, you'll see your open positions we have. Next, we have Tom Zeiser with Engineering and Public Works.
Good evening. A large sinkhole actually developed in the Rapid subdivision on Post Oak Lane over the weekend. It's related to a storm drain in that roadway. Crews did respond and covered that hole with a plate, and we are investigating best course of action to make those repairs, but anticipate there'll be some excavation going on this week in that roadway. Also, some concrete repairs that were advertised in the weekly update last Friday were scheduled for today that were delayed due to weather, but those, that work will be done tomorrow. Again, that was a crushed storm top on Georgia Avenue in front of Communit Graphics, as well as some sidewalk in River North subdivision. We have a bid out, opening scheduled for this Thursday for exterior pressure washing of the Center Street parking deck. Depending on the outcome of that bid, we hope to have some additional cleaning activity going on over there over the next few weeks. And then lastly, we have a RFQ for Transportation Engineering Services that will be published this week, and that's just for long-term, just what it says, engineering services for a number of potential transportation-related projects, and we expect that will be a future council action to accept our recommendation.
So, that's a request for qualification.
That's correct.
And we're not bidding on a project. We're just going to be looking to get a one or two qualified contractors down the road. If we're needing their services, we would have that available.
Correct. It's what we call an on-call service contractor.
We've done that in the past.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to interject. This is also what covered the Georgia Avenue Traffic Calming Project, correct?
Yeah, we anticipate that will be one of the, if not the, first project that we initiate under this new contract.
So, this is, as you as council members, I'll look forward to kind of the next series of capital project sales tax projects. We'll be concluding the Public Safety Headquarters this year as far as from, you know, closing out the front line, and the way that the cities approach capital project sales taxes, doing, you know, large-scale projects one at a time. And so ultimately, as we finish and conclude the Public Safety Headquarters, we'll be having an eye towards the Georgia Avenue Traffic Calming and Pedestrian Safety Project. And so, the selection of an engineering firm is part of that cycle to be able to get them to do the detailed work that's required to move forward on that project. So, you'll see, you have a product in hand already from Kimberly-Horn. That is what we use to staff with SEDOT for the approvals to do the work that we're going to do on Georgia Avenue. This contract with RFQ with an engineering firm is going to give us the hard detail work to do that, and the fund source for that would be out of CPSD four.
We really don't want the low bid bidder necessarily when you talk about engineer, because you could get somebody who has a...
Right. So, this has a degree, right?
Stop, stop.
So, when you think about the funding strategy, and what I'll be bringing to council at future actions will be, you know, a request for qualifications, which is, you know, which will result in a contract with an engineering firm. But then, much like the other capital projects we've had here in the city that were city-run, namely Fire Station One and the Public Safety Headquarters, those will go out not as an RFQ, but an RFP, Request for Proposals, low bid. So, the general contractor is going to be given a set of engineering schematics to bid on. And so ultimately, at that point in time, we're going to be looking for the low bid contractor to be able to do that work. But the engineering services, we're going to go out and look for the best qualified engineers to put this whole package together. I'll cover it down for Tommy since he is out and about, and just the two items there is the Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for March 19th, and then you also have a Board of Zoning Appeals scheduled for April 1st, and that includes four special exception requests for home occupations and businesses.
Next, we have James Sutton with Public Services.
Next, we have James Sutton with public services.
Good evening, mayor and council. When you get notification from the North Augusta Garden Club that they're gonna perform a workday, you know, spring's just around the corner. And they've been doing this ever since 2017. They've been a big integral part of the development and maintaining the Butterfly Garden since its opening. So, they do a wonderful job, and they're a big, you know, attribute to this city. But anyway, this Wednesday on the twelfth, the North Augusta Garden Club and Piedmont Church Group out of North Carolina will hold a cleanup workday from nine o'clock to three. Then, on Thursday, the church group will relocate over to the Living History Park and assist the park with some cleanup efforts from nine to two as well. Nine to three, I'm sorry.
Well, where did these church groups come from? I mean, you're talking about not in North Augusta churches.
Not in North Carolina. Group out of North Carolina.
Oh, so they're just coming to hell.
And, you know, they, we appreciate it, and I'm sure the folks at the Living History Park and the Garden Club appreciate it as well. Moving forward, the 2025 budget included funding for a contractor to assist property maintenance staff with some small tasks such as mowing grass, putting out mulch, trimming, hedging, and such. So, you may notice Dennis Lawn Care at various areas throughout the city that were a low bid. They will be working at least for the next eleven months. It's kind of, it ain't really a rider on the capabilities of what property maintenance can do. We do have some vacancies, so that fund is not gonna be accessed, we don't expect. So, we should break even with our financials at the end of the year versus our payroll.
They've already made Creighton Park look great. You noticed. They did all that, yeah. Thanks, James.
Next, we have Chief Johnson with public safety.
Good evening. Last Friday night, the Mothers Against Drunk Driving held their awards ceremony in Columbia, and PSO Doug Rubin was awarded for being one of the top five DUI officers in the state of South Carolina. And then, on Thursday, Captain Luke Sherman is graduating from the FBI National Academy. There was four other people from the state of South Carolina that went to this class with him. It's a pretty big accomplishment. And so, he'll be graduating Thursday. And then, last Tuesday, we finally got the switch, switched over to dispatch at our new building, so we're fully functioning out of there. Great accomplishment.
That's great.
And we'll give you a little more detail on that in a few minutes.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Rick Meyer with Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Reminder, this Saturday, a great day for North Augusta as we have the ribbon cutting for the North Augusta Miracle League Field at nine thirty. North Augusta High School baseball JV and varsity baseball teams will host Gray Collegiate this Friday at SRP Park as part of a city function. The Riverview Park Activity Center Elevator Modernization begins the week of March twenty-fourth, and it couldn't happen at a better time as the old elevator's starting to act up again. So...
How long will that take?
That will probably take about six weeks, give or take. Yeah, it takes a little while to do that. So, we're gonna be kind of struggling a little bit there for six weeks, but the end result will be, will be good. Spring sports games begin the week of March twenty-fourth, and another good news for us about Creighton Park Playground. Work begins the week after Masters, April fourteenth, and so will the Riverview Park Tennis Court res servicing projects. And lastly, this Wednesday, Parks and Recreation Greenway team will be full staff. We'll launch these guys out, start getting pictures and info out to the social media and folks, so they'll know who is a part of this team and make sure that they're wearing green.
Karen and all the tennis folks know about the resurfacing.
Yes, indeed. I had Karen in my office today. Yes.
Thank you. All right. That's awesome. Good stuff.
Last, Carl Waldhauer with tourism.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tourism marketing coordinator Jen Goldwyn received her section one oh seven drone license from the FAA last week, so happy she's gonna be able to get some good footage of our events coming up. Speaking of events, I'm just gonna take you through a few highlights through March. Thursday, this Thursday, March thirteenth, Good Morning North Augusta, hosted by the North Augusta Chamber, will be meeting here at seven thirty in the Palmetto Terrace. Mr. Clifford is gonna be our guest presenter for that breakfasts this week. Thursday, March twentieth, Third Thursday reminder, those events typically start at five PM through downtown North Augusta. Also, Thursday, March twentieth, Savannah River SmackDown, which is a wrestling event, SRP Park's hosting. Gates for that one open at six, and tickets are still available. Saturday, March twenty-second is the first of the Explore North Augusta Concert Series. Whiskey Run will be performing. It's free to the public at seven PM. Monday, March twenty-fourth, Lafayette and Hamburg, sponsored by the Arts and Heritage Center. It starts at ten AM that Monday morning. It's gonna be start off with Milage Murray and a proclamation by Mayor Williams. At eleven AM, right here in Council Chambers, Milage Murray's gonna give a lecture about those events, and from one to three that afternoon, Charles Hammond House open for tours. Saturday, March twenty-ninth is the second of the Explore North Augusta Concert Series with Velcro Pygmies, also seven PM at Sharon Jones Amphitheater, and it's free admission as well, and all these events can be found on the Explore North Augusta calendar.
That concludes our department detail update, and so now, we're moving to our focus items, and you should be receiving today an update on the North Augusta Foundations, and we'll be starting off with the Beautification Foundation first, so our presenter could come down to the lectern.
Let me just take a minute before, y'all come on down, just so I can kind of give up an overview real quickly. When, the kind of the idea behind is really two-fold reasons why this council wanted to form these foundations. One was, we know there are people in businesses that would like to contribute to things, improve their community for the city, but they would have to put those contributions into our general fund. There's no control. There's not really a tax benefit like it is. So, what the foundation is gonna allow people to do, and you'll see both of them talk about this, is giving citizens and even non-citizens, or businesses, a way to say, hey, here's something I see value in, and these two foundations that will make North Augusta better. I'm gonna contribute money. There's a tax benefit for me for doing it, but what also, if I want to, I can control the use of those dollars. They can, they're designated if the person wants to. And if they don't want to designate it, then it can be used by the foundation based on the foundation project. So, those, and the second part of it's very important, this is citizen-driven. We've appointed citizens to run these two boards. There is a liaison from the city that is that conduit, so the foundations are not going off on a tangent that is not gonna make sense for the city. And we do have, of course, two council representatives on there, but that's really just, I think, ad hoc. The real issue is the citizens that you're gonna hear about, they're the ones running these foundations. So, I would tell you, just in a short period of time, and you're gonna hear it tonight, they've really gone beyond what I thought y'all would do, both of y'all, both organizations would have done this far. So, it's been very pleasing. So, anyway, with that, I'll turn it over to Brian and Cheryl.
I am Brian Wenzick, chairman of the North Augusta Beautification Foundation, and this is Dr. Cheryl Wenzick, co-chair at the North Augusta Beautification Foundation. The mission of the North Augusta Beautification Foundation is to provide attractive, quality, open public spaces and amenities that enrich the quality of life for the citizens and businesses of North Augusta, South Carolina. Strictly our mission, and we try to stay focused on that in everything we do, whether it's for fundraising, for projects, or our volunteer coordinating effort. Much like you mentioned earlier about this church coming down, North Carolina, they reached out to the foundation and became a two-day event this week.
Thank you, mayor and council, for allowing us to share the highlights of our activities for the last year and a half. It's been a year and a half. It's been fun. So, first of all, at our very first meeting, we wanted to select a project that would get the attention of the public to let them know the North Augusta Beautification Foundation is here. So, we decided to focus on hanging baskets for the downtown area, although we are to serve the whole community of North Augusta, not just downtown, but we wanted to get something that would get everybody's attention. So, we've had forty-four sponsors donate money for forty-four baskets, forty-one of which are already hanging. When the summer comes, we'll have a lot bigger, brighter flowers, but as you know, if any of y'all garden, you can't just put any kind of flowers in, and they survive the winter. So, we're very proud of those, and we're very thankful to have partnered with the city with the watering efforts, as well as North Augusta Florida. They've been also advising us, because they were also working on the same effort earlier. And also, Cold Creek Nurseries is working with us as well, so it's been a collaborative effort. But I want you to know, y'all know, because you're with the city, that the employees of the city stepped up three days, or two days before the Jack-o'-lantern Jubilee, and got all forty-one of those hanging baskets installed. So, they did an awesome job despite everything going on after that Helene incident. So, they did an awesome job. And also, we visited several other cities to find out what they were doing successfully, such as Aiken. They have some of these earth planter containers, but they're on the sidewalks, but we wanted to see what they were doing. We were surprised to find out they don't have as many flowers as we're planning on having throughout downtown. And then, we visited Greenville. Everybody knows about Greenville, South Carolina, but they haven't done that overnight. They've been working that for over thirty years, but they are the epitome of what we're striving for. Lexington has an awesome wine walk, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a minute, but that occurs in May, and it's their big fundraiser. And then, Kings Tree was another place we visited, because they have eighty of the earth planter hanging baskets, as well as the pots on the ground, and we wanted to learn from them what to do, what not to do. And they were very gracious in giving us a tour of the area. We've created Facebook pages, websites. We created a brochure, as well as a promo video, and of course, we immediately started our groupney communication thread, so that we would always be keeping in touch and updating each other. And we also got that five oh one C three tax exempt status that we really need as a foundation to have people be able to write these off tax time. We drug our booth around every opportunity we could to show off our hanging flower basket prototype and tell the community about North Augusta Beautification Foundation. We participated in the Spring Fest. We participated in Third Thursday in front of The Grove with Tia. We also were invited by Tourism to set up a booth eight oh three night, Cody Webb concert night, and of course, we were also there to celebrate with the community the comeback after Helene at Jack-o'-lantern Jubilee. We also organized that Serve North Augusta cleanup effort, and that's what Brown and Mr. James were referring to earlier about all of these churches getting together, working together to make our community better. So, they cleaned up the Living History Park. They also worked on Billy's Butterfly Garden. Word got out, and they're wanting to do it again. And we also have some members that wanna be the point person for those sorts of efforts, but we collaborate with the churches, with the Carolina Hills Garden Club, as well as some local professional people just walked up and said, how can I help? And they joined in. So, it was a really sweet day of working for our community. We had a raffle drawing. Over thirty-three hundred dollars of gifts were donated so that we could pull off this fundraising raffle. That was fun, and Yorpa allowed us to draw the names there at their location. They've been very supportive. And we were able to share about our Jessamine Music Festival until it got postponed, and I think we all know why, but we're back this year. So, it will be on November eighth, and we renamed it the North Augusta Wine Walk for publicity purposes, so people will just really know what it's about. There's gonna be music. There's gonna be food trucks there, but it's supposed to be a beautiful evening for the neighbors to come together and the businesses, so that we can enjoy beautiful life here in our community. And also, we received a very generous tax grant from our city, so that's gonna be very helpful in putting on the best wine walk ever. And one of the beautiful benefits of working with this foundation are the people we've met and the businesses we met, where we've worked hand-in-hand with tourism. They, they are the most patient people, and you know that, but they're so smart, and they know what they're doing, and they're a pleasure to work with. But tourism, the Chamber of Commerce, the Arts Council has been very helpful in sharing information about music, as well as Marion Biggar over there, the Arts and Heritage Center, and of course, North Augusta Four has also been lending some of their information and skills. We increased our board membership by two, and we also have some board volunteers as well. And some of them can't be on the board because their address isn't in North Augusta, it's in Belvidere, but we have people that volunteer. And, Mr. Mayor, you don't know this, but we have been discussing a secret project, so we'll fill you in later, okay? But it's gonna be big. It's gonna stay around year after year, and I'd be glad to entertain any questions except the one about the secret project.
Do you want any of your board members here that want to stand up and introduce?
Of course, of course.
And will they need you to stand up and turn around, because this is the scene, you know, throughout the city.
Joel, Susan, and Trina?
All right, good.
And then, we have our cousin foundation here as well, the public safety. Did y'all have any questions?
Just keep doing what you're doing. It's exciting.
We're having fun. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm Jason Payne, the chair of the North Augusta Public Safety Foundation. I'm joined with my vice chair, Becky Dearden.
Make sure y'all kind of talk in the microphone, so if I can hear you.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
All right.
Is this better?
All right.
It's perfect. First of all, I'm just gonna put a disclaimer out there. I'm not nearly as prepared as Brian and Cheryl, so I'm gonna do my best here to provide you all the update that you need. But we did provide read-ahead documentation, so I'm not gonna spend too much time kind of iterating on what we did last year and what our aspirational goals are for this year. So, in the read-ahead material that you have, council members and mayor, you have our 2024 historical report that talks about the origin of the foundation, where we went, where we grew last year, what our goals were, and then, just from a metric standpoint, how we performed in achieving those goals. And in 2025, we also listed our annual plan that talks about just aspirationally what we want to do this year. That includes increasing our membership, because that was one of the areas, just from a lessons learned standpoint, that we learned that we have to grow next year, or this coming year and future years. Last year, the foundation did a great job in terms of raising money to support those who serve our community, Chief Johnson and our public safety employees. We raised nearly thirty thousand dollars last year. One of our goals this year is to raise forty thousand dollars to provide, to be able to resource unfunded training and education requirements for the department, support community outreach events, and also, to be able to provide relief and moral support and financial support to our officers as they, as they need it. So, looking at the quad chart here, I'll just cover a few things. So, last year, some big highlights as a result of the charity golf tournament that the, that the public safety department does every year, we raised eight thousand dollars, over eight thousand dollars for twelve underprivileged families across North Augusta that really made a difference in their holiday season that just would not have been possible without public safety and without you all's initiative to start the foundation. So, thank you so much for that. As a result of Hurricane Helene, we provided fifteen hundred dollars, five hundred dollars each to three of our public safety officers who were severely impacted and temporarily relocated as a result of Hurricane Helene. And that's something that we absolutely hope to be able to continue in the future, because at the, at the core of who we are as a foundation, we firmly believe that that's why, that is one of our core missions, and what we're here to do is to be able to support our public safety officers in any type of way that they, that they needed. We also didn't really provide any money specifically for training last year, but we did provide some money for three K-9 officers, and we've also contributed to the honor guard uniforms for this year. And then, at Chief Johnson's request, we provided holiday cards to all one hundred and ten public safety employees. That was accompanied with a twenty-dollar Chick-fil-A gift card for each employee, just to say thank you so much for what you do, because as a community and as a city, we appreciate all of your service. Things that we're looking at long-term, so I want to talk a little bit out in the future, because we did spend some time kind of building the roots of the foundation, so we can, so we can ensure that this foundation is here long after us and long after everyone else is in this room. So, we are looking at payroll deductions for DPS employees, because at the holiday party that they had in December, there were several officers who approached us and said they would certainly be interested in contributing in that manner if it were available, and I believe that's one of the things that Kayla is looking into for us with Jim Clifford. Becky is gonna take the lead on this, but we're looking at brainstorming process of starting some sort of annual community outreach of starting some sort of annual community outreach event within the next one to two years. It's going to be absolutely huge and phenomenal. This will be kind of our mainstay or staple event that we host year after year. Long term, we're looking at a, at providing a, at having a DPS education scholarship fund. We're not exactly sure what that's going to look like, but we have begun to benchmark with other organizations like AUSA in terms of just receiving their rubrics. What does that look like? How do you qualify? And then what sort of capital we need to raise in order to be able to have a scholarship foundation for our officers and potentially their families? And how can we, you know, contribute to their continuing education as, as professionals? And then finally, one of the other things that we're looking at, that we're looking at doing, that we will do is we'll have an unfunded capital expense project that we're looking at no later than FY thirty-one. So no details yet exactly on what that looks like. But our plan is, is that, you know, as, as the department identifies what their needs are, we would certainly like to be able to fill, fulfill some of those unfunded requirements requests that, that you all are not able to cover as a city. We would certainly love to be able to carry that water for you. So with that, I'll pause for any questions. And I'll also say that, you know, this, this foundation is listed in the historical report, our top five contributors last year. But we really did make this foundation, you know, from a, from a grassroots perspective. And there were a lot of individual citizen contributions throughout the year. Mostly everyone, I, I haven't gotten to Councilman Carpenter yet, but I'll make sure that I get you one. The poker chips that you have are just some of the tokens that we hand out at some of our community outreach events. They have a QR code on there. If you're looking for an opportunity to, how can you pitch in or help? Scan the QR code and feel free to please donate to our foundation because ninety-five percent of everything that we receive goes directly back into our public safety department.
Jason, very impressed. Can you kind of give me an idea of what? Yeah, I know you're not ready to do it yet, but what would be an example of the annual community outreach event? Give me, what would that be comparable to? Or I mean, what, what, what do you think about doing? What does that mean?
So it would be something more like, I keep using the word gala, but that's not really what we're imagining. But it would be an annual dinner where we invite the public to purchase tickets and come hang out with us, maybe have some barbecue, incorporate some events, our things to do at the dinner to get the community more involved with public safety and give them a little taste of what being a public safety officer is like.
That's a great idea. I'm with you now. I just needed that little picture.
Okay.
Thank you. You want to introduce any of the folks that are, any of your board members are here?
Yes, I would like to introduce two of my other board members who are here. Councilwoman Jennifer McCauley and Councilman David McGee.
But Lisa's not yet, okay.
Thank you very much.
That's very good, thanks. Before we move on, let me just, I think this is important. Because it kind of, you know, one of the things that everyone knows, this council has made a commitment the last four years. Communication's been one of our priorities. And one of the initiatives that this council started four years ago was something called a citizen involvement form. So citizens can literally go online and they can fill out a form that says, hey, how would you like to be involved with the city? Never has this city had an opportunity for you as a citizen to tell us what it is you want to do. So what it's doing is allowing us to make an inventory. And over the last four years, this council has appointed twenty-two people, twenty-two citizens who have never prior to the last four years ever served on any board or commission. Twenty-two people, never before have we seen that. Of those twenty-two people, nine of those came from citizens who filled out the community citizen involvement form. And as a matter of fact, two of the people on your foundation, Jason, Mike Ward, who is not on the board due to some health issues, but Lisa Isla. I would not known about Lisa at all. She, I actually have her form right here. Her response, she went on back in, in May of twenty twenty-two and said, I would like to be involved in North Augusta Public Safety somehow. I'd be interested in volunteering in some way in one of those departments. So when we formed the foundation, we reached out to her and guess what? She's on your foundation now making a difference. She feels like she's involved. On the beautification side, Robin Hooker's not here. She's a mother of three, very involved. Again, here's a, here's a, lives in Hammond Hill, has three children, want to be involved in the community. Reached out here, she's on the Beautification Foundation, has done an amazing job for y'all. Cheryl, as a matter of fact, filled this out. That's how I kind of met Brian. So five of the people who are on these two foundations came from the citizen involvement form. So I'm saying that for citizens, not the people here, but out watching is, if you want, just by, if you're interested, you need to let us know that you want to be involved. There's not going, that's not a guarantee you will be involved. I will tell you another example, Althea Dunbar. Althea Dunbar, back in twenty twenty-two, sent in one of these. And she said, I used to be in the, I used to work in the polling station for the county. I live in North Augusta. I want to be involved and I want to be, I want to do something in the election. Held it for over a year, didn't have a place for it. Unfortunately, we had one of our municipal election commissioners passed away. So guess what? We had an inventory of Althea. And she's done an amazing job the last two years. We have known about her if we hadn't had this, she had not filled this out. Another young guy, James Choi. James is planting a church in North Augusta. Because of that, reached out to him, talked to him, and actually, he actually got involved. He read one of the scriptures that are national, that the North Augusta National Day of Prayer last year. Okay? So I'm saying all that is, and this isn't a time and place, but there will be a time and place later that we will talk about the other new initiatives that we created the last four years to help communicate better with citizens and give citizens a voice. But this is one proof positive that it's out there. So I'm just saying, if you're interested, you need to let us know. It's not a guarantee you're going to find, we can find a place for you. But if we don't know you're interested, we don't know where to put you. So anyway.
Well, we got another one too. I don't know, did you fill yours out, Susan? I don't, you just called.
No, Susan got reached out by Brian.
Yeah, yeah. She called, we talked too, didn't we? And that had to be from the hurricane, remember? That's how we made it. So she has been a good volunteer.
Oh, yeah. All right, that's all I got, Ms. Clifford. Thank you both of your foundations. Great job, proud of you. Good stuff.
Next up is Chief Johnson giving you an update on the new Public Safety Headquarters.
All right, before I get started, I want to say thank you to the Public Safety Foundation. They do a great job helping us out and for all your time that you do, giving to that, coming to the meetings and taking care of everything. Exciting news, Public Safety Headquarters. Tonight, we're going to give you a little sneak peek, show you a couple of slide decks of what we have going on. But first, we want to start out with where we were. I mean, there's a picture that was taken this week of the old City Hall. Multiple iterations of City Hall were included in this picture. It started off in the building on the right before moving to the building on the left, before it became public safety. And so if you look there, it looks weird when you ride by with the parking lot these days. All right, next slide.
Thank goodness.
Yeah, we're glad it looks that way. Yes, and then here's the new building. And as you see there, one of the big things that we wanted to accomplish when we went to the new building was separating courts out from under public safety. And we've done that internally with controls and walls and externally with the signage so that there's no confusion as to who's involved where the court separated from public safety. All right, and in here, you see it's a modern, state-of-the-art dispatch center. And you say, well, why is it so dark in the picture? When they look at those computer screens all day, that's the way the dispatchers prefer it to be dark in there. The way that with the new lights in there, they can brighten them, dim them, they have shades. One thing they didn't have in the old building, it was an idea of what's going on outside because there was no good windows in that room. Now they have a very large window, so if it's storming, they're able to know what's going on, what the conditions are outside. But as you can see here, every one of those screens serves a different purpose. And they have to be, our dispatchers are extremely talented to be able to know what's going on on every screen at all times and make all of them function. This right here is our EOC training room. We didn't have any emergency operations center in the old building. And then, like we said, when Hurricane Helene hit, our best option at that time was Station One. So we just did a makeshift EOC in the, in the day room of that station. And it worked great for what we were doing until we moved down here and got everything back online here at City Hall. But this one here is set up, all those desks are reconfigurable with data ports and power so that multiple people can come through, plug in their laptops and stay engaged. The multiple screens you see on the front can be hooked up differently. They're set up because this is a training class that we had in there last Thursday. So all of them have the same material, which you can set it up where you can watch the local news, stay up to date with what's going on, keep your weather on there, and you can do a presentation all at the same time. This right here is a crown jewel of our new building. We never had anything. We were working in the old, the old courtroom is where they would do the dusting for the fingerprints. And as you can see in the vent back there, it'll do that. And then on the left is a machine that's used to dry anything. If we have to work a case where we have to collect their clothes, where they may have blood on them or whatnot. Previously, we would just have to lay it out and let it run through the cycle of drying and whatever smells come from that. Whereas in this one here, we can dry it, keep it secure, and, and the smell is contained there instead of emanating throughout the building. Ma'am? So the thing you see in the background back there, that is a vent hood so that when they're fuming for prints, it'll take the dust out rather than, because if you've ever seen the fingerprint dust, it's black and it gets, sticks to everything is what makes it work. And when I say it sticks to everything, whether you want it to stick to it or not, that's what it's sticking to. And so when they go in there and work, this allows them to do that in a safe environment rather than breathing the dust in and everything else. All right, but the highlight of this is the next slide. We are having our ribbon cutting on Friday, March twenty-first at two PM. And we hope to see everyone there. We're going to do, the honor guard's going to be there. They're going to do a presentation, raise the flag for us there. So it's going to be a great day and we will be opening up for tours after that. Since it is a working station, they will be guided tours all the way through in small groups. So we're looking forward to a good turnout from the public. We want citizens to come. Yes, sir, we want everybody to come that's been asking, that's seen this project going on. And this is a prime example of what our capital project sales tax will do. That's awesome, Chief. Great job. This is fantastic, exciting. Good stuff. Thank y'all.
Tough act to follow, but we'll go right into the, the update. Next slide, please. So the action is released since the last update. Again, we're focused right now on stumps and also dealing with the mixed neighborhoods. And just wanted to highlight there, we posted on our city's Facebook page that SCDOT is actively working in Hammond Hills neighborhood now for stump removal. I know Councilman Buck saw one of those stumps today. And so they're getting a large number of stumps. We have them work out, they're working on Campbellton Drive on the west side of Hammond Hills. And they're working that straight and moving east from there. Again, I anticipate that's going to be several weeks just based on the density of stumps in the Hammond Hills neighborhood. And as we get additional updates from SCDT, I'd be happy to pass those along. No other major changes on that slide. Next slide, please. So as we previously briefed, we have city sites and then contracted sites. And we have to consolidate the city sites to the contracted sites for eventual removal from the city limits itself. So since the last update, we have now fully closed out two of the city sites. So one was at the Fifth Street Bridge and one was in Belvidere. So both those sites have been fully consolidated. Contractors have removed all of the debris from those sites and we will no longer be using those sites going forward. We still have debris at the Country Club property and also at the Soccer Complex. And those will still be being used for the next several weeks as we're continuing to move that. But again, our focus at this point in time is stumps and then also the mixed neighborhoods and find out if there are any gaps in there from a coverage perspective. Next slide. We cracked a hundred thousand cubic yards since the last update. So, and again, I think you're still going to see those numbers continue to tick north as we consolidate those debris fields and those debris sites based on the work that's going on. And you can see also that the, one of Vista's site, the Riverside Boulevard site is continuing to grow. And I think we've just about hit max capacity of that site. And I would anticipate in the next week or two, you're going to see some major grinding operations going on as they try to get that down to size and then backhaul. Next slide. So a couple of changes from the previous update, but I'll go through here with you. Again, our, our focus is still working the mixed neighborhoods, but we have also had city crews working specifically on East Avenue and Jersey Avenue through this past weekend. And that was a fair amount of work, especially on Jersey. There's a decent amount of round two that had to happen there. So our folks are continuing to work that. So we're staying mostly east of Georgia Avenue at this point in time. But I would anticipate within a week, we'll be moving on the west side of Georgia Avenue to continue operations there. And then, as I talked about earlier, we've received multiple bids. And so we'll be coming back to council for a contract action to have basically a tree service remove the trees out of our eleven stormwater detention ponds as we go forward. And James Sutton and his crews have already started to work to clear some of the utility easements that are there that provide access to our manhole covers through the sanitary sewer system. Next slide. And as we briefed, and we've made changes now to the city website to reflect this. This has been out on the city's Facebook page. And again, this is a limited yard waste operation. So that only allows for bagged or yard carts for our waste services. So if you have a pile of leaves, if you've got a bunch of sticks together, if you put those in and that was after the, the last pass that we did in your neighborhood, that pile will stay there until you put them in a, in a bag or to a yard cart, in which case, so we'll get them at that point in time.
If we get all the council, if y'all will share that, I'll put it on the Facebook page. Good stuff.
Next slide. Up to your questions.
Now, is that, this is the slide before about the bags. Is that just for like two or three months? Do we get through or is that going to be forever?
I wouldn't say it's forever, Councilwoman. The, the city council has not given us guidance to change our yard waste policy, but we have, based on their debris remover requirements, have to do a modified version of this until we can go back to our normal operations.
And I know what we have something when senior citizens cannot pull their cart to the road for regular trash, if they fill out a certain form, and James, I guess, he, they, the trash man will get out and go up to their door, right? Now, do we have anything for people who can't get? Because another lady just wrote me, said she has a friend that cannot get their debris to the road some way. I mean, there's.
Councilman, I'd say the city is not going to be moving people's debris out of their yards into the roadway. So they can get a, they can get a neighbor to help them. They can, we can push that to some of the church groups. I know that are volunteering in areas, but that's not a standard that the city can attain.
Okay, all right, just a couple, couple of comments. Just to remind everybody, you can go now to the city website. On the bottom right, there's a whole, there's a link to the, everything you want to know about the election coming up on April the twenty-ninth. It says two thousand twenty-five partisan general election, special election information, April the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five. So it will list precincts, polling, will take you to the SC Gov. So anything you want to know about that lets you come up April twenty-ninth, that's now on the city website. Public Safety is going to be having Coffee with a Cop. This will be April, let me see. Thank you, April the sixteenth, from seven thirty to nine thirty, I think. A great opportunity to get out at Stone Roastery, Belvidere Clearwater Road. Then Thursday's coming up, next Thursday from five to eight. And the Arts and Heritage Center will be opening a new exhibit, Women in Photography. That'll be on the twentieth of this month from five to eight as well. So some good things out there in the community. Anything y'all got?
Yeah, I just got to say something. But Ricky up there, I always tell Ricky, we can't hardly see him. But thank you each week for our different screens. Have y'all noticed him? He puts, he's so pretty. And then also, my little Jordan Lark up there, one of your policewomen. She's one of my children from way back, right? Jordan, Jordan was an all-star team for me. She pitched five back-to-back-to-back games and never had pitched much. She pitched five back-to-back-to-back games and never had pitched much, but she got us through. We played up. Do you remember that, Jordan? And it makes me so happy that some of our young people are giving back, especially as a policeman. Thank you, Jordan, and Miss Pat loves you.
Yep, uh, definitely got something. Just want to give a shout out to North Augusta High School, Yellow Jackets. The Williams team won the state championship, and the boys got close, but they felt a little bit short, but they played their tails off. You know, it was an exciting time. The football team did a phenomenal job this year. And uh, you know, a lot of good things coming, you know.
A lot of talent at the high school.
A lot of talent, for sure.
But I'd like to say a shout out to Rick Myers and, well, Carl used to be, but Rick, North Augusta Park Recreation. When you look at all these children playing these state championship teams, I'm telling you, they play right over there at Riverview Park, baseball, Lions Field, and the gym center. So thank Rick and everybody for what we have off for our young people.
Talk of the town. We're the talk of the town. Okay, all right, Kevin, you good? All right, thank y'all for being here.